Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Common Council Meeting for Tuesday, June 20, 2017. If you have not done so, please turn off all electronic devices and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and Asylum Prayer. Ms. Nyla, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Buttery.
Present.
Mrs. Boy.
Present.
Ms. Carnes.
Present.
Mr. Dabney.
Present.
Mr. Hamilton.
Present.
Mr. Presblewinski.
Present.
Mr. Chwonkey.
Present.
Ms. Silvas.
Present.
And Ms. Willow.
Present.
We have nine present and no one absent.
And we do have a forum. I trust everyone does have the minutes, the regular meeting from June 6. Do we have any additions, corrections?
Motion to approve the minutes, Mr. President.
Forward. I have a motion by Councilman Presblewinski, supported by Councilman Hamilton and someone else.
Dabney.
Councilwoman Carnes.
Carnes.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the minutes are approved. Reports of standing committees?
Mr. President, prior to the meeting this evening, the Finance Committee met and we discussed the claims docket that was presented to us and dated 6/16. One addition I want to make the council aware of on a report I got is an additional $140, and that was recommended to be approved by the Finance Committee. So that'll bring the total of the docket to $241,486.80. So just if you want to update your docket there, that's $241,486.80. And that was for legal services from James Meyer and Associates. And just to review the docket, the first bill on the docket is to Hasen Associates, and that's for 2017 projects for the Community Crossing, and that's for $21,335.05. The next bill, Global Engineering and Land Surveying for the 2017 projects also associated with the Community Crossings projects, that's $51,502.50. The third item is to DH2W Architecture for exterior repairs to the lighthouse for $4,151.25. The next item is to Pro Pump and Controls Incorporated to rebuild the pumps at the golf course, that's for $74,958. And Midwest Golf and Turf for 2017, 22 golf carts purchased by the Park Department, that was for $59,400. Next item was Alternative Support Apparatus, and that's for the ATV for the park for $30,000. And the last item was to James Myers and Associates for legal services for $141,000, for a total of $241,486.80. And that's all coming from the Riverboat Fund, number 9,000. And just for the detail of the meeting, the meeting was called to order at 6:12 PM this evening. Councilwoman Silvas and Dabney made the motion and a second to approve the docket, and it was voted upon 3-0 in favor. And motion to adjourn was made at 6:18 PM by Councilwoman Silvas. Mr. Dabney seconded it, and 3-0 in favor of adjournment. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other reports of standing committees? Any reports of standing committees? Hearing none. Any reports of special or select committees? Any special or select committees? Any special or select? Hearing none. Next, reports of other city offices and departments. Tonight, we have First Lady Agnes Smear, who's going to introduce the mayor for the State of the City address. And if I could ask all the council and clerks and the attorney to take a seat in the first row, so we could have the introduction of Mayor. Mayor.
You can have my spot. Hello, everyone. Thank you for being here this evening. My name is Agnes Smear. Welcome to the 2017 State of the City address. Before I begin, I want to acknowledge my daughter, if she can stand for a moment, Jewel. Jewel has just completed her first year in college. She attends Purdue University Northwest, and you know, they just combined Purdue North Central and Purdue University Calumet. So she's one of the first ones to get started this year, and she did very well. We're very proud of her, and I wanted to acknowledge her of that. Well, I hope by now you have all heard the good news. The momentum is in Michigan City's favor. Over the past five years, many people have participated in numerous discussions about the future of our city. They have discussed the importance of capitalizing on our advantages and discussed the future of Michigan City. The capitalization and advantages have been networked among many people, businesses, city officials, county officials, and state officials. That momentum will continue while Michigan City continues to gain support at the federal level. During the mayor's State of the City address, you will find that Michigan City is not ordinary, that in fact, we are an extraordinary city. Now, it is with great pleasure that I introduce my husband, Mayor Ron Smear.
Thank you very much, Agnes. Wow, I think I can get her to talk that nice to me at home all the time. I'll have it made here. But before I start the address this evening, we've lost a couple of real crucial gentlemen in our community recently that I'd like to ask for a moment of silence as we talk. Police Chief Mark Swistec lost his father the day before Father's Day. John Swistec, who was also a retired police officer. And as we think about some of the other losses we've had in our community, I think a moment of silence is... I'm just thinking of... Yes, thank you. I could think of Mr. Enquest, but I wanted to say his first name, Dale Enquest, who served us in many capacities in our community on various boards and commissions. I always called him Mr. Enquest, I was escaping for his first name for a second there. But also served in the National Lakeshore in many capacities and has been crucial and important to our area. So a moment of silence for those two gentlemen, if we could, please. Thank you very much. Good evening, and welcome to the 2017 State of the City address. Providing superior city services has always been at the forefront of my administration. There are a multitude of tasks and expectations that I put on my various departments that many individuals may not recognize or think too much about because they're being accomplished. I strongly believe in addressing issues such as trash, brush piles, overgrown properties, junk and abandoned cars, potholes. These are basic, yet essential duties which have a direct and positive impact on our citizens' quality of life, and, under my leadership, we will continue to provide these exceptional services to our community. Without a doubt, 2016 will be viewed as a memorable year. Need I say more to the effect than to mention the highly contentious presidential election featuring two historical candidates? Or the Chicago Cubs winning the World Series after a 108-year drought? As I stand here before you tonight, on this early 2017 summer evening, I am five and a half years into my tenure as mayor of this great city. During this time, my administration, along with the hard-working men and women in all of our departments throughout the city, have accomplished a myriad of wonderful projects and improvements designed to strengthen and grow Michigan City. As your mayor, I believe it is imperative to make decisions that will have the greatest positive impact on the greatest number of people. In addition, those decisions need to be about today and tomorrow, because as Simon Sinek once said, "Leadership is not about the next election, it is about the next generation." All who have traveled... So tonight, I am going to break away from my traditional State of the City speech, which mainly focused on the previous year, and instead use this opportunity to take a quick, yet encompassing look at some of the major accomplishments of my administration in 2016 and since I took office in January of 2012. The demolition of the old George Marina. The vacant George Marina building was an eyesore for all who traveled to our lakefront. At the end of 2012, that building was removed, and in June of 2013, a new public access park was built on that site, was introduced to our community in a grand opening ceremony. The Danny Bruce Vietnam Memorial Upgrades. Erected in the 1980s, the monument at the memorial had an incomplete citation along with an incorrectly displayed medal. A new plaque, marine red in color, reflecting the entire citation, was installed on the monument, along with a bronze plaque denoting the correct Marine Corps Medal of Honor. In addition, a new flagpole and landscape was added to this memorial. The new Michigan City Police Station. This $13 million investment in our community is located where the former dilapidated and unsightly Eastport School once stood. This building now provides our brave men and women of the police department a state-of-the-art facility from which they can work. In addition, the police department campus is home of Cleveland Playground, which features a beautiful new basketball court, new quarter-mile walking track, sledding hill, and new playground Beginning in July of 2015, the Michigan City Police Department was the first, and are still today, the only police agency in Lepore County utilizing body cameras. Since that time, technology for body cameras has developed and improved, making our current cameras dated. We are currently in the process of upgrading the department's body cameras by entering into a five-year agreement with Exxon Enterprise. The five-year contract will cost $61,746 for the first year, and then $37,316 the final four years. This upgrade will provide our officers with body cameras that can be activated when they activate their emergency lights or remove their taser or gun from their holster. The old cameras only activated when an officer tapped on his or her camera on. The new cameras will also come with improved battery life, and the new agreement includes a cloud-based storage system, which is vitally important, given the current data storage contract for our old cameras will be expiring. The Two-Way Street Conversion Project. The Two-Way Street Conversion Project on the city's north end focused on Pine Street, Washington Street, Ninth Street. The project included the conversion of the streets from one way to two-way, decorative pedestrian and high-mass lighting, and new bike lanes along the intersections, improvements at Second and Franklin Streets. The I-94 Highway 421 Interchange Improvement Project. In partnership with INDOT, this project included structural and aesthetic improvements. Enhancements to the overpass and interchange improvements included decorative bridge railings featuring the words "Michigan City" and a decorative tri-color wave pattern on both railings facing the oncoming traffic east and west along the interstate. Further improvements included decorative bridge abutments with accent lighting showing a lighthouse inlay in the concrete, decorative lighting, and two beautifully illuminated flagpoles proudly displaying two large American flags. The Wall Bash Street Green Infrastructure Project. This project included substantial streetscaping, such as landscaping, interpretive and historic signage, decorative lighting, and the introduction of a new rain gardens along the length of Wall Bash Street from 11th Street to US Highway 12. A $92,000 grant from Lake Michigan Coastal Program and a $224,000 green infrastructure grant from the EPA was secured to assist us with the overall costs of this project. Formation of the Committee on Lead. In early March, I formed a committee on lead with clear goals of the committee to find the best means to educate our community about the dangers of lead and to promote awareness of and access to current resources at the local, state, and federal levels. The committee, led by Sanitary District General Manager Michael Cuss, recently applied for a $1.5 million grant. If awarded this money, we will utilize it to help lead abatement in homes throughout our community. The Warren Building and Art Space. Constructed in 1927, the Warren Building sat vacant and near point of no return. In 2014, Michigan City was awarded tax credits which propelled the revitalization of the Warren Building into art space uptown artist lofts. The $13.7 million project resulted in 44 live-work units for artists and their families, along with a ground-floor studio, commercial space. Today, art space is thriving, and the Warren Building is once again a beautiful, iconic Michigan City landmark. The Letter of Map Revision for the Cheney Run Area. The city hired Hasen Associates to work in coordination with the Michigan City Sanitary District and the Planning Department to complete an extensive detailed modeling analysis of the Cheney Run, ditch, and storm sewer system. This new modeling has resulted in much smaller floodplain area. The new floodplain area has been approved by FEMA, and when it goes in effect on August 4, 2017, 128 properties will be removed from the current floodplain, saving homeowners thousands of dollars in unnecessary flood insurance premiums. In 2013, 156 properties were affected. On August 4, 2017, 28 properties will remain affected. Joe Hawkins, Pullman, Tall Timbers, and Gardenia Park Improvements. The Michigan City Parks and Recreation Department had public input meetings, surveys available for the community to participate prior to any of these projects beginning. All of these parks received ADA-compliant tile surfacing. In addition, all the park improvements included some, if not all, of the following: new playground equipment and features, new basketball court and hoops, new shelter, new benches, as well as new walking trails. Construction of the North Point Pavilion. Located where the outdated and unsightly Parks and Recreation Administration Office Building used to stand, North Point Pavilion is a beautiful new addition to Washington Park. This building offers office space for our lifeguards, parking staff, and this year is the new distribution center for the Washington Park stickers. Open to the public, this building includes restrooms, outdoor beach showers, a lower pavilion entertainment area, concession operations, and upper observation deck with stunning views of Lake Michigan. The Sanitary District and Water Department Infrastructure Projects. Since 2012, these two departments have combined to do approximately $20 million worth of infrastructure improvements geared to address outdated and deteriorating systems. As your mayor, I have not and will not waste time and resources on studies and ideas that sit on the shelf. This administration has taken pride in identifying goals, doing our due diligence as we work towards those goals, and then carrying through and executing a plan to make those goals a reality. Though they are too numerous to list, here are just a few more of our accomplishments since 2012. Hundred-foot communication tower erected on City Hall property. Funded through the Homeland Security Grant, this tower makes our Emergency Operations Center room at City Hall fully operational. Operational allows emergency management officials the ability to communicate with agencies at the county and at state levels. Feder's Alley and Bismarck Hill Project. Restoration plans which include the removal of invasive species, planning of native grasses, and improving access to the lake. Opening the tree canopy and seeding bare ground were appropriate to stabilize exposed soils while promoting wildlife habitat. State of Indiana's First ADA-compliant Kayak Launch at Hanson Park. Known as the EZ Launch, the ramp allows equal accessibility to paddling for both able-bodied persons and those with physical limitations. Elston Grove Project, highlighted by new streetscaping infrastructure improvements in this historic Michigan City neighborhood. Award-winning Lake Michigan Gateway Implementation Strategy. Three-to-five-year action agenda, including capital improvements, infrastructure upgrades, and aesthetic enhancements to the downtown and the lakefront areas. As a result of some of these initiated plans, we received the 2016 Quality of Place Award from One Region. Michigan Boulevard Phase Two, from Van Spanje Avenue to Highway 212 Interchange. This project included new stormwater drains, new decorative lighting, new street signals, and the removal of mediums and the addition of turning lanes. Michigan City Lighthouse. Our iconic beacon received structural repairs and a complete paint job. Demolitions since taking office in 2012, we have taken down over 100 residential and commercial structures which were dilapidated beyond repair. Old Lighthouse Museum Repairs. Reconstruction of the leaking lantern room was completed with monies from the Lake Michigan Coastal Grant. The 1858 building is listed on the National Register of Historic Places and is one of the most important historical structures found anywhere on Lake Michigan. Barker Mansion Improvements. The entire Barker Mansion basement underwent mold and asbestos remediation through Capital Improvement Project funding in 2016. A functional work classroom and exhibit space was created through this process. Millions of dollars in private investment has occurred in our community, just to name a few: the Dunes Plaza Project, and three projects that are currently under construction: the Vermillion Assisted Living Facility, the Cleveland Crossing Michigan City Chrysler Dodge Jeep dealership, and the new Franciscan Alliance Hospital. The Great Lakes Grand Prix was named Festival of the Year in 2016. This award was given by Midwest Living Magazine in conjunction with the Indiana Tourism Association. This was the inaugural year for this award, and we are very proud to have been selected from all the wonderful events held across this state. Transit Triangle, started in 2015. This commuter bus service route between Michigan City, Lepore, Purdue Northwest offers citizens and students access to locations previously that were unserved. Ridership has increased 27% in 2016. Citywide Branding Implementation. The Planning Department and Redevelopment Commission will work with the city's new Special Events and Marketing Director and Brand Leadership Team, known as BLT, to begin to prioritize and implement the recommendations of the Branding Master Plan completed by Roger Brooks International in 2016. One of the first steps will be the unveiling of the new Create, Play, and Repeat website that will happen in early this summer. We lost a great man and an American sports icon in 2016, Arnold Palmer. The King said of success, "The road to success is always under construction." We mentioned some of our successes, but by no means are we done. Michigan City still has much to do and much to accomplish. As I stand here before the members of the city council tonight, I ask you to work with me as we continue to remain vigilant in our obligation to work together, providing great services and improvements that enhance the quality of life for the residents of our visitors and to our community. As we move through 2017, I would like to update you on numerous plans and projects that are currently in the process of being executed, along with some goals that we hope to realize before the end of this year. Woodruff Business Park. The 110-acre Woodruff Business Park, developed in 1999, is now certified AT&amp;T Fiber Ready. This is the first business park in Lepore County to receive this designation for its high-speed internet connectivity. Woodruff Business Park now has shovel-ready sites and technological infrastructure in place, both of which are necessary components to every top-level business that mandates that they begin to look at the possibility, as they begin to look at the possibility of relocating or expanding their operations. Amerplex Project. In partnership with Holiday Properties and the Redevelopment Commission, we will work to develop the first phase of the Amerplex Marquette Business Park located near the southwest corner of US Highway 20 and Cleveland Avenue by late 2017. Groundbreaking has recently occurred on the first phase of the project and will include two new light industrial flex space buildings of 60,000 and 45,000 square feet, which will provide additional jobs and economic development opportunities for the Michigan City community. In addition, the new Amerplex Drive will provide access to the west portion of the Amerplex Marquette Development. Demolition of the former News Dispatch and Police Station buildings. Demolition began December 2016 and was completed in March of this year. These properties, now owned by the Redevelopment Commission, will pave the way for a new hotel mixed-use development on this site, which will serve as a catalyst for additional investment and tax base on our city's north end. Wall Bash, Washington Park Master Plan. Washington Park Master Plan, the Planning Department and Redevelopment Commission will work with the Park Board and Parks Department to implement the first phases of the Washington Park Master Plan. The first phase will include a newly-designed traffic circle and new entrance into Washington Park. Park. The main goal of this five-to-seven-year plan is to capitalize on the assets of the park by developing additional attractions and upgrading existing facilities while being respectful of the park's unique, natural, and historic character. WPA Structure Plan. Three-year plan to address the restoration of the Historic Works Progress Administration (WPA) structures. Restoration of the WPA Greenhouse building is planned for this year. Upon completion of this structure, it will be used to house equipment utilized by our police, fire, and Parks Department. In 2018, in conjunction with the city and the Parks Department, we will identify and secure funding for and work with the consultants and contractors to restore the historic WPA Engineer Castle in the Washington Park Zoo. And in 2019, in conjunction with the city and Parks Department, we will identify and secure funding for the work with consultants and will work with consultants and contractors to perform the necessary work needed in the restoration of the historic WPA Observation Tower located in Washington Park. Financial Software Upgrade and Fiber Optic Ring Completion. In February of this year, I asked the Michigan City Common Council to consider appropriating $750,000 to update the city's financial software and to complete the city's fiber optic ring. The city's current software, Funware, has a sundown date of December 31, 2017. Because Funware has a sundown date at the end of this year, and for the past few months, the City Controller's Office has been diligently researching and investigating other financial software options that would meet our needs. Through that process, the City Controller identified a financial software product, New World Product, with Tyler Technologies, that has a disaster recovery backup that is cloud-based. This new software will adequately meet the city's needs and those of the DLGF. The result will be better service, more security, more efficient management of both city and public funds. In addition, the city's IT department has been instrumental in this process and has advised of the need to complete the city's fiber optic ring before we could fully implement the new software. Aside from running the new financial software, the fiber optic ring will be an important investment in future technology and communication for the city. I'm happy to announce the City Council did appropriate that money for these projects, and both will be completed this year. South Shore Double-Tracking Legislation and Project. In March, I testified before the Indiana Senate to garner support from the state officials in regards to the funding of the double-tracking project. I am happy to announce that on May 18 of this year, right here in Michigan City, Governor Holcomb signed legislation funding the double-tracking of the south shoreline between Gary and The project will construct improvements to the south shore system by adding additional track to increase efficiency in operations, create badly-needed redundancy in terms of rail operations, and in the event of closures or breakdowns. And reduce travel times around one hour from Michigan City to Chicago's Millennium Station. In addition, $125 million of this $290 million project will involve enhancements done completely within the city of Michigan City city limits. And they will be including a new state-of-the-art elevated ADA-compliant train station. The environmental assessment and preliminary engineering is underway for this project. Before I move on to this next paragraph, I wanted to point out Dr. Barbara Easton-Walkins in our audience, and thank you for all you do, doctor. But I wanted to talk, just quickly mention that, you know, Michigan City's school system is a quality school system, and we're second to none in northwest Indiana, and I think folks have to start realizing it. I just want to commend you on all the great work and the team that you've done and the cooperation between the city of Michigan City, doctor. I really appreciate that. 2017 Graduates. The first recipients of the PROMIS Scholarship. The Michigan City PROMIS Scholarship is a program designed to help cultivate economic development, promote families, and stabilize our population, while simultaneously bolstering our public schools. The PROMIS Scholarship is valued up to $5,000 per year, renewable for four years, and will be applied toward tuition and fees at colleges, universities, post-secondary, or vocational schools in the state of Indiana. The Michigan City High School Senior Class of 2017 will be the first class to be awarded the PROMIS Scholarship. We are anticipating at least 45 students will apply for the PROMIS Scholarship this year, with numbers increasing each year as the public becomes more aware of this incredible opportunity for our students. As I finish up here tonight, I'd like to leave you with a quote from author Robert Collier, which I consider very pertinent. "Success is the sum of small efforts, repeated day in and day out. As mayor, I have led my administration with that philosophy since day one. I truly believe that the daily victories, no matter their size, add up to and lead us to the big Michigan City successes which we have and which we will continue to see." God bless America and God bless Michigan City. Thank you, everybody. Yes, I believe Council President is going to, Schwanke, have a five-minute recess. Okay, and then we'll reconvene.
We are still under reports of other city offices and departments, and next on our agenda, it's not on our agenda, but we are going to have Mr. Ron Miller from Michigan City Community Enrichment Corp. can give us an update.
Thank you for not making me wait till the public comment. I just thought I'd give you a brief update. Some people think that the Enrichment Corporation, since our grant cycle doesn't begin until after Thanksgiving, and we award the checks in March, that we have some time off, and if only we did. But one of the things I wanted to point out was the fact that this fall, when we start our next grant cycle, last year we awarded little over $600,000, around $650,000, but we had applications for somewhere around $1.2 or $1.3 million. We always get substantially more than we have money to award, and we're always grappling with the difficulty because one of the requirements we have is that recipients of grant funds, we take that money very seriously. We think of it as our own, and we think that we're responsible for making sure that that money is spent correctly. And so we have four quarterly reports that each grant recipient has to file. The first one is due on June 30. And we've been a little bit, shall we say, lenient with some of the not-for-profit organizations. It's difficult. As someone said at our meeting last week, it's difficult when you know these individuals, when you work with them, when you see the good that their organizations do. But we've had some problems with some of the organizations recording, reporting what money they've spent and providing the receipts to show that they spent the money properly. So we're going to be more difficult about it, starting with the current grant cycle, to the point that if an organization does not meet their obligations and fire their quarterly reports, we might refuse to allow them to apply for a grant the next cycle. It's a difficult situation. We've had two situations recently. We've had to ask for money back from an organization because they couldn't properly document how the money was spent. And we had, I think I mentioned this before you a few weeks ago, right after the last grant cycle, I had two individuals that I know in the community that came to me and said, "We have great organizations, we have great programs, why didn't we get money?" And I looked, and they were just outside of where we ran out of money. So when we run out of money, we can't award anymore. So these were great programs and great organizations, and we had to say no to them. We couldn't give them money last year. So is it fair to them to be lenient with organizations that are not meeting the rules? Or should we be a little bit more stringent and say, "You know what the rules are"? I've never filed a grant, so I'm not involved with that, but I've talked to people who have, and they say our grant application cycle now, since we've put it online, since we've streamlined it, is about as simple and as easy as any of the grant applications they fill out. And yet we have some organizations that are not meeting their obligations. So I'm going to talk to the News Dispatch, we're going to do some reports on WEFM, and we're going to remind people that they need to meet those quarterly reporting because it's very important. We want to know that the money is being spent properly, and we want that documented. And if they're not willing to do that, then we're going to have to say we're not going to give you money next year. And that's going to be a difficult decision. But that's one of the things we're looking at, and that's one of the reasons I wanted to speak to you tonight, because I know this is on TV, and I'm following the mayor, so hopefully a few people stuck around, and remind the not-for-profit organizations, "We support you, we know what a great job you do for this community, but you have to be responsible." We also know that not-for-profits, many people are volunteers, we're volunteers ourselves. So they're donating their time to operate these organizations, and people change, and programs change, and we try to give them latitude. But it's going to be very important in the future that these organizations meet these quarterly reports, because we just have to, we have to be able to document that we're being responsible about the money that we're handing to these organizations. So I thank you for your time, and I'll be back to you again in the fall before we start our next grant application.
Oh, we thank you, Mr. Miller, absolutely. Any other reports of city offices or departments? Any other offices or city departments? Hearing none. Next, we can move to the claims docket. The corrected claims in the amount of $241,486.80 from Fund Number 9,000 Riverboat. That's a pleasure.
Motion to pay the claims?
A motion by Councilman Prezvelinski, supported by Councilman Hamilton. All those in favor paying the claims signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then we can pay those claims. Ms. Nowitzki, do we have any petitions before us?
There are no petitions.
Do we have any communications?
There were no communications received.
And we have no resolutions. Ms. Nowitzki, would you please read our first ordinance on second reading without objection by title only?
An ordinance on second reading by title only, creating Section 2-409 and Chapter 2 of the Michigan City Municipal Code to establish a restricted and non-reverting marketing promotional fund, and that's introduced by Mr. Whitlow.
And does the author have anything to add tonight?
Yes, I would like to, because the summer is here, and they want to get going with this, we'd like to be able to, in talking with Keisha Pate, to move this to third reading tonight if nobody objects. Oh, yes, she is here. If there's anything further anybody would like to add.
Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Any public comment? Hearing none? Are you asking, you are asking for third reading? Are any objections to third reading of this ordinance tonight? Hearing none? Ms. Nowitzki, would you please read this ordinance on third reading without objection by title only?
An ordinance on third reading by title only, creating Section 2-409 and Chapter 2 of the Michigan City Municipal Code to establish a restricted, non-reverting marketing promotional fund, and it's introduced by Mr. Whitlow.
Anything else to add? Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Any public comment? Any comments from the council? Councilwoman Boy?
I just wanted to point out to people that we are creating a fund, but we're not putting any money in it. We're just creating the place to put funds when we get them at this point.
Any other?
Move to approve.
And support.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Whitlow, supported by Councilwoman Boy. Ms. Nowitzki, would you please call the roll on the motion to approve?
Mr. Beatry.
Aye.
Mrs. Boy.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Ms. Carnes.
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton.
Aye.
Mr. Prezvelinski.
Aye.
Mr. Schwanke.
Aye.
Ms. Silvis.
Aye.
Mr. Whitlow.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
And the ordinance is approved, and we'll be forward to the mayor for his signature. Ms. Nowitzki, would you please read our second ordinance on second reading without objection by title only?
An ordinance on second reading by title only, approving additional appropriation in the budget of the Boyd Development Fund for engineering costs to perform and overlay district transportation analysis and the US 12 thoroughfare plan, and this is introduced by Mr. Beatry.
And does the author have anything to add?
Just that this is the ordinance that was the result of the mayor's suggestion at our workshop on this issue, that the city accept responsibility for doing some overlay district transportation analysis and some thoroughfare planning. Those were the things that we were asking developers to do, and they felt it was premature to ask them to do that prior to the, they got deeper into their development plans. And the mayor offered the city should take that up, and I think a lot of us agreed. So that's what this ordinance really does, and I know Craig Phillips is here, the city planner, knows much more about this than I do. But in order to expedite this, I would like to do the same thing that Councilwoman Whitlow did, and ask that we have third reading on this. There are no objections from any other councilperson.
We will have a formal public hearing tonight on this. Formal public hearing is now open. Is there any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Any public comments? Hearing none. The formal public hearing is now closed. Any comments from the council? Any council comments? Councilwoman Hamilton.
I just have a quick question for Craig. Well, when they do this study, are they going to do it in this summer, or fall, or winter? Because I hope you're not going to say winter, because...
No. No, if you actually approve this this evening, they're ready to basically go now because we are under contract with the consultants that we already would be using for this. So we would just work it into the current schedule and start on it right away. So the plan is that they would get started right away this summer to do the analysis, which is the best time to do this kind of analysis because it's the lakeshore area. And the sooner we get this done, I would appreciate it if we did pass this on third reading tonight so that they can do that, otherwise we would have to wait till sometime in July to get started, and this will allow us to get that done sooner than later, and stay within our intended timeframe.
Any other council comments?
Mr. President, a question from Mr. Phillips. As far as the consultants go, are there consultants in Michigan City that could do this type of work?
There...
Because a consultant right now is from out of town, correct?
But they're part of a contract we already have, so it's the simplest way for us to go about doing this. We looked at that, and...
Could you explain what kind of contract they're on that automatically gives them jobs?
We have a contract with Kenda Keys Collaborative to study this area already as part of the comprehensive plan scope. And so, and we already have a contract with the subconsultant, American Structure Point, to work on this project as well. So it's just the simplest thing, and the most seamless way to go about this would be to just hire the subconsultant that's already on the contract for the comp plan and already studying this area to do the traffic counts and the other analysis necessary for this
But again, my question is, are there consultants in Michigan City that could do this kind of work and do it for $20,000 or less?
I'm not going to stand here and tell you there aren't consultants that can do this work, but I'm asking you to do the most efficient, to go about this the most efficient way in order to get this done sooner, so that we can get the project underway sooner than later. It would take us a little bit longer to formulate a contract with another company locally than it would to be able to do this as an addendum to an existing contract.
Okay, I just wish in the future...
Okay, I just wish in the future that when we have projects like that that come up, for example, this here, and I know that we've been talking about this for, I don't know, a month, possibly a month and a half now, that that would give us time to go out and look for any type of consultants that may be in Michigan City or in Lepore County that work here, that live here, that spend their monies here instead of giving it to American Structure Point, which I believe they're out in Indianapolis, correct?
I respect what you're saying, and we do give a lot of, we do give a great deal of work to our local companies.
Okay, no, I understand that. But this here is just another example that we could give monies to...
And we do whenever those opportunities arise. This is the simpler and easier and more efficient way of going about this.
Thank you.
Councilman Dabney.
Yeah, how long would this thoroughfare plan and the traffic, how long would this take?
This is expected to take, this phase of the project is expected to take three to six months.
Three to six months.
Councilman Whitlow.
I just had a quick comment that I wanted to make on this. I sat in the workshop regarding this project back, what, a month or more ago now, and when this concept, this idea came up to do this now as an incentive for developers and so forth, I really thought, I think that's a good idea. I think the mayor's got the right idea here at this point. To me, I likened it, now this is my simple way of thinking, but it's like building, the shell building. You know, you're helping somebody see that, hey, we've got this available to you here. We're helping you to come to our community. So that's, I support this, and I understand what Councilman Perez-Walensky is saying, I absolutely do. But I also understand this was a part of a bigger contract, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
And this piece was already in it?
Correct. This is just enhancing an existing contract. We're studying this area already with these consultants.
Yes.
So it's just enhancing their contract and adding the thing, you know, do this thing to their contract, which makes them sense.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council? And you are asking for third reading?
Yeah, I would move that without objection, we move to third reading this evening.
Are there any objections to having third reading? Hearing none. Ms. Nowitzki, would you please read this ordinance without objection by title only on third reading?
An ordinance on third reading by title only, approving additional appropriation in the budget of the Boyd Development Fund for engineering costs to perform and overlay district transportation analysts and U.S. 12 thoroughfare plan, and this is introduced by Mr. Beatry.
And do you have anything else to add? You're good. Any comments from the public? Any public comment? Any public comment? Hearing none. Any comments from the council? Any council comments? Any council comments?
Motion to approve.
Support.
I have a motion by Councilman Beatry, supported by Councilwoman Boy. Ms. Nowitzki, would you please call the roll on the motion to approve?
Mrs. Boy.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Ms. Carnes.
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton.
Aye.
Mr. Perez-Walensky.
Aye.
Mr. Schwanke.
Aye.
Ms. Silvers.
Aye.
Mr. Whitlow.
Aye.
And Mr. Beatry.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
The ordinance is approved, and we'll be forwarded to the mayor for his signature. Next on the agenda is unfinished business. The council has one appointment to the Urban Enterprise Association. We're still looking for nominations. Anyone have a nomination?
Okay, yeah, I'll make the nomination. I'd like to nominate Amy Penrod.
I'll support that contingent on clarification of the address. I'm still a little concerned because I know that's been an issue in the past, to find someone that actually lives in that area. And we do have an applicant review committee now, and I trust that will be scheduled shortly.
Yeah, I need to apologize for that, for not having that already scheduled. Kim did a good job of letting me know, giving me a heads up electronically, and I got a hard copy Friday, I think it was. By the time I got it Friday, it was too late to get the 48-hour notice and to beat the open door. So I didn't have a meeting on Amy's application prior to this meeting. I have talked to Bryant and to Ron, the two other committee members, and I think it's important we get together first to talk about the parameters of this committee and what questions we want to ask, what information we want to secure from these candidates. So we're going to have that meeting prior to interviewing any candidates themselves. But I don't think the fact that we didn't have a committee meeting on her should preclude us voting on her. We've been doing it this way for six years.
Well, we have ample time, because we're only taking nominations today, so we'll vote at the next council meeting. So we've got approximately two weeks, give or take, to hopefully get that together and get a recommendation back from the committee.
Yeah, I want to have that first meeting initially, though, among the three of us prior to interviewing a candidate.
I agree, that'd be a great idea.
Do we have any other nominations at this point? Hearing none. Next, under new business, do we have any new business? I guess the clerk's office is telling me to remind everyone that we do have a new assignment sheet, and they just added that applicant review committee. The MOG committee has been removed, because that was shut down at the new NICD committee created by the mayor's office. So I removed that from the committee assignment sheet, and we added the applicant review committee to the sheet. Any other new business? Any other new business? Any comments from the public? Any public comments? Any public comments? Hearing none. Any comments from the council? Councilman, Councilwoman Carnes?
I just want to invite the public to a free seminar that we're going to have here at City Hall on June 29, 6:00 p.m. Historian Glory June Glyfe is going to present a free public seminar on the story of Washington Parks and Indiana's historic structures that are the legacy of Franklin Delano Roosevelt's New Deal, sponsored by the Washington Park Zoological Society and the Michigan City Historical Society. You might remember that Ms. Glyfe wrote the application to put Washington Park on the National Register of Historic Places back in the late '80s, I believe. So I would invite everyone to come to this talk, 6:00 p.m., Thursday, June 29, right here in City Hall.
Thank you. Councilman Whitlow.
Just as your representative liaison to the Redevelopment Commission, I would point out that the last meeting, the discussion about the Ohio Street project brought out the fact that there will be some workshops, joint workshops between the council and the commission this summer for discussion of that project. So just, we'll look forward to that.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council? Councilwoman Boy?
Don't forget that the Kitty Parade is on the 30th, and the Fourth of July Parade is on the first. Not having it on the fourth for some reason, because this is Saturday, I guess. And wish everybody a happy Fourth, and we'll see you on the fifth when we have our meeting.
Any other council comments? Councilman Beatry.
Just a brief comment. I'd like to thank the mayor for the state of the city today, because as I sat there and I listened to him read all the accomplishments, and I read them on my copy. When you're in the trenches, and when you're fighting every day and every two weeks and every month to accomplish goals, sometimes you don't have the opportunity to kind of sit back, get that broad view, and really survey what's been accomplished as a product of all the efforts you've put in. And that's an impressive list of accomplishments for Michigan City, and I think we can accept, you know, some of those accolades as well, because as a city council, we played a major role in many of those things. But the mayor's to be congratulated, certainly his departments are as well, as well as the Redevelopment Commission, everyone else's, Park Department, everybody who's worked on these things. So I just, I appreciate the opportunity that he gave us to kind of sit back and relish in some of the victories that we've had, because it kind of gives you renewed energy to keep up the good fight. So thank you, mayor.
Thank you, councilman. Any other comments from the council?
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion by Councilman Hamilton, supported by Councilwoman Boy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting stands adjourned.
Wait a second there, Ron.